K L T V sound check, K L T V sound check.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome. Welcome to the Tuesday meeting of the V O C C. What are you all here for today? It must be a special day, huh? Let's uh, if you want to join me, we'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America. And to the right of our borders. With my colleagues' permission, I'd like to adjust the agenda order a little bit. I'd like to move the oath up to now instead of... I'd like to move the oath up to now instead of below consent agenda. We okay with that?
Great idea.
Okay, so today we have with us, and we're swearing in two new commissioners. We have Judge Evans is going to do the honors. So I'll turn that over to Judge Evans and we'll do that.
Are we supposed to say I'll rise? No, not here, okay.
Morning, everybody.
Is this, yes, it is working. Um, let's go in reverse alphabetical order. Uh, let's start with Stephen Rader. Come on up, pre-commissioner.
I, Steve Rader.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Form and discharge.
Perform and discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Callous County Commissioner District One.
Callous County Commissioner District One.
According to the law.
According to the law.
For the best of my ability.
For the best of my ability.
We'll now invite Mr. Commissioner-elect Steve Farrell.
I'll hold it like that.
You can do that.
I think so.
You gotta be able to.
Yeah.
I don't wanna do this.
Yeah, Steve, why don't you go around here on the side of there.
I, Steve Farrell.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties of the office.
Perform and discharge the duties of the office.
Callous County Commissioner District Two.
According to the law. According to the law.
For the best of my.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
So help me God.
Thank you for all that. Welcome aboard, my two new seatmates. My leaving seatmates, this is their last scheduled regular meeting.
I move adjourned.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You guys have been adjourned for three months. Okay, we'll get back to agenda minutes. Commissioner Mortensen.
Well, I hope I can carry the meeting off today. It's pretty touching. I did review the minutes of the activities last week and I moved to approve those minutes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes. Any comments, corrections?
For me?
Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Consent agenda. I have one request that just came in. Item number five. Uh, the requests, emergency request for the annex building. The dollar amount has changed, so it's been asked to move that to a motion item. Uh, and we have a copy of the contract you'll have to review.
It's going down in price, right?
Yeah, like they all do. Yeah. Okay, we all good with that? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go through consent agenda. Items one through four are all memorandum, memorandums of understanding when we got, uh, it completes the ARPA-approved projects. The ARPA funds that were received, all projects had to be set in place by the end of this year. And these items will complete the last part for that. You have to have a memorandum of understanding. So we have one with the Carol's Water Association. Uh, we have one with juvenile detention, parks and public works. We have one with public works, facilities, information technology. And we have another one with public works that covers, uh, public works had a list of them. And this memorandum covers all those. It gives the public works the ability to, uh, work projects, uh, not as individual memorandums, but as, as they come about and as, uh, the project is, is needed in hierarchy. Item number five, we're moving to, uh, motion. Item. Uh, item six, these are the last, uh, tax levies for the county of special purpose districts. We have to certify budgets for these areas. And this is the last ones for this year. Item number seven, agreement with Northwest Enforcement for Armed Security Guard Services. That will start the first of this year. Uh, from our conversation yesterday, uh, they've already started to transition with, with staff, bringing them in and, and showing them, uh, you know, what the operation is. And this contract is. And annual cost shall not exceed five hundred forty-two thousand zero zero seven and forty-seven cents. Item eight, an agreement number two, professional service group Gibson Olson for on-call water and wastewater management. This is really just a time extension. You've seen a lot of these where we have contracts that end in two thousand twenty-four and we're extending them out the next year. Uh, item number two is a contract extension with professional service, with Engineering Solutions LLC for as-needed landfill gas engineering services. Uh, they do gas work, uh. They're designing as our, our cells reach maturity or get to where they're no longer, uh, we no longer put stuff in them. They're designing vertical wells because they're, they'll, they last the test of time. And, and so they do that work for us. This is the, actually the last extension of a current contract. So the next time we see this, it'll actually go out for bid. So this extends that contract another year and adds a hundred. Hundred thousand to it. Item number ten, amendment professional service with Windsor Engineers for Camelot large onsite septic system. This is a system we had to, had to take over out in Camelot. Uh, it extends it to December of two thousand twenty-five with an increase of twenty-one thousand three hundred. Item number eleven, this is just a time extension, uh, no dollar amounts, uh, with Gibson Olson. Extending completion date for replacing current Woodbrook wastewater treatment plant. So that's a time extension to December of two thousand twenty-five. We have a resolution for the order and levy of the, for the year two thousand twenty-five to Lexington Flood Control Zone District. And we do have a voucher ratification for drainage improvement, improvement district number one, uh, for payments and expenses occurred in October two thousand twenty-four in the amount of fourteen thousand two fifty-four and sixty-four cents. Vouchers. In amount of seven million, seven hundred and eleven thousand, three thirty-six and forty-six cents. Board correspondence, affidavit posting resume for the month of October. Affidavit of posting resume for the month of November. Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. A notice dated twelve-ten of two thousand twenty, recording the dam safety inspection report. Another one from Federal Energy Regulatory Commission dated eleven twenty-five, twenty-four regarding the public alert and warning system installation plan for the Merwin project. Uh, executed contracts, agreements, resolution, the personal service agreement with E S D, Education Service District one twelve. The, to provide the truancy, the intervention program for use with truancy court petition. Total cost is one hundred forty-four thousand from July first, two thousand twenty-four through June of two thousand twenty-five. These are pass-through funds that come down to us from the state and they're used for this program. And in a resolution number twenty-four dash one oh five, authorizing purchase and sale agreement with Port of Longview, um, we authorize Mark Moss as Director of Public Works to execute the agreement. This is one, you guys, maybe you want, you want to explain the history on that one. That started later before my time.
If you said the local history, I have to defer to Mr. Weber.
The agreement with the port has to do with our cooperation with their plans to expand this number of rail lines going into the port. And they're using a corridor right at the northern edge of the old Tenet Way landfill site. For those of you who may have taken garbage to the Tenet Way site, you'll know there was a covered area and, um, just, just north of where the mound of, of the landfill is. And they're pictures, they're purchasing that strip of land on which to build, uh, several new tracks that'll, that'll service, uh, a port expansion. So, and we've been under negotiations. They've had to pay for relocating some, some, uh, uh, wells. Uh, has to be, it's still under monitoring, even though it's been closed now for about ten years. It, it has twenty more years of, of regular monitoring. And so that's all been taken care of at the port's cost as they, they planned a tremendous expansion and, 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 and the, on, on the Port of Longview.
Yeah, and, and, uh, the price they, they pay for that, it has to stay with the, the closing costs, as I understand it, the closing costs for the landfill. So we won't actually see the benefit of that for, until that's all closed out, which twenty years? Yeah, which is still twenty years down the line, but okay. So that's.
I tend to look at this as the right thing. I've never been very strong on jurisdictional issues. The, of the port is. Is a taxpayer asset. The property we had was taxpayer asset that they take over. It just makes total sense completely and they're going to be able to use it constructively. And, uh, that's always a pleasing thing.
Yeah. I wanted to make a couple of comments. Uh, you, you mentioned the, the agreement with the Educational Service District. That is a service district for the school districts within the third congressional district. And it's created by the state to provide additional services. In this particular instance, the state makes available money for, uh, a truancy, um, a, a truancy program. Many of you may remember us going to school with kids who were truant. They ended up in juvie. Well, the, the state stopped doing that and, and kind of in exchange, this helps to, uh, reach out to those individuals and their families to do the investigations, to find out why the student is being truant and to try to provide some alternatives. Um, the idea is keep them somehow connected with school rather than putting them in, in, uh, juvenile detention. So that's, uh, again, it's, it is pass-through dollars and we're the agent for that pass-through. The other thing I wanted to mention is we are changing out our security guard company. We had a successful bid, a different company bid. But interestingly, they're hiring two of the old guards or young guards, current guards. And, and they're going with the job rather than, uh, having to come up with people who've no, who have no experience. So I think that was a, that's a pretty nice feature, uh, as we're, we're trying to save money.
I was, we're, we're, taxpayers are gonna pay a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars to find out what we all know. The kids at school don't go to school because they are bored to death there. And, uh, we could save them that by just saying they're bored. Fix that. But, uh, apparently that doesn't work. There are of course some other ancillary issues, but they're subordinate, I think, to, to being bored.
Yeah. That, that all, that came about in legislature from what they call the BECA law. It was a, a twelve-year-old that didn't go to school and then was, uh, unfortunately taken by an evil person and, and, and killed. And so legislature passed a law that anybody from, I think, third grade, you have to go to school. It's not a choice. And so that, then they provided some funds to support getting him in there. So that's where that kind of originated.
And that makes no sense at all, but it's fact.
I'm, yeah, yeah, I don't. Exactly, it's fact. Okay, that's consent agenda. Your pleasure on that?
Mr. Chairman, I move we do adopt today's consent agenda as presented with the exception of item number six.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Questions, comments? Yeah? Item five.
Five.
Okay, thank you. Uh, number ten, with the septic system of Camelot, um, that is a private, uh, area. And I don't understand why the county is going to go in and fix something that is, it's, it's not a public entity. And why are we spending money? And then, um, as far as the truancy, my husband taught at the juvenile center. And I believe that those kids didn't want to be there and it is a deterrent for truancy. So, um, I'm, I'm for that, keeping that going. Uh, I know it made a big difference in those kids' lives because they didn't want to be there. And they had still to be in school. I mean, he, he taught the school while he was in there. So, um, I'm for continuing that. But as far as the Camelot, I don't understand why the county is gonna go in.
That was private and it failed as a private? And so we had to take it on?
It failed as a private?
Uh huh.
And.
So we, that's how, that's how we've gotten all of our systems. They've started as private and then they failed and the county picks them up to keep them going.
Okay, so you know how I'm super, super cheap or, or tight, what you might say? Why don't we give them advice instead of giving them our money?
Well, I, I wasn't part of all when it all started, but I can just tell you that it, it was a private system that failed and the county picked it up to keep that service available to those residents in there?
Well, then perhaps maybe we needed to set up precedence on our, on our, um, planning committee where if they're going to have a development like that, that their septic system is definitely on a most guarded, um. You know, you have to really look at the plans for the inevitable blood slide, rainfall, whatever that they have because, um, I, I know I'm super, like I said, I'm super cheap when it comes to things.
I will say that. I will say that's an anomaly for a horse person, right?
We don't talk about that. No, that's a totally different thing. You got me there.
So Flo, one of the, one of the reasons the county has given the responsibility is we all operate under the law. You heard our our new commissioners promised to uphold the constitution and the laws of the state, and the law, the state. Gives supervision of all septic tank approvals to the counties. In this instance, that development was approved. The system worked just fine. The developer left. He was the one with the expertise on operating the system. So so the maintenance, you know, the maintenance kind of fell fell to the wayside. And it began failing the the regular tests. So that's at that point. If if I and I may be, I may be a little bit off, but it was about seven to ten years into the development. The state basically said, system's failing, you've got to, you've got to save them.
I totally understand that. But if my septic system failed, would you guys come and get fix mine?
Hmm.
No.
No.
So I would myself, considering I am I am tight, is the fact that there are quite a few residents there, and why don't they all chip in and fix it?
Well, and they do. I mean, they're they're part of the system. They get regular bills from the county. And they're they're building up, and they have built up a a reserve. But it's a very expensive system. They, you know, and it's very expensive. They will tell you that they pay through the nose for their utility bills. Yeah, much more than, much more than the cities charge. But obviously, uh, quite a bit more than you all charge on your own septic tanks because you're taking care of the maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Blow an iron print so I can give her a hard time like that. Any other questions on consent agenda? Okay, see none. I'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move into motion items. First one on the list, item seventeen is a resolution extending authorizing the sheriff to sign an agreement with Humane Society. Sheriff is on.
He's online.
We got right back there. Okay, come on up. This is a uh. Our local hu- humane society was i- is in the process of being uh. Building will still be there, but it'll be run by Clark County. And uh, our sheriff and I think Kelso and Longview are working with that entity to come to a a contract agreement. While they're working through that process, this extends our current agreement. That we signed, I think, last year, whenever we signed that. Am I pretty close on that?
Yeah, that's an accurate statement. Sheriff is on and. Uh, was going to answer questions if he had any, but yeah, that's the, we're just extending what we're currently doing until they can finalize uh between the two humane societies.
Yeah.
I um, found it gratifying to notice that in the negotiations. Um, the negotiation has lowered the cost to the county. Of course, we're we're doing some kennel. Housing and uh, but I think this is the backup for the county's modest program.
Yes. Yeah, I'd also, I think overall, the general handling of. Of animals is going to improve significantly in the county and the municipalities.
Because a little bit later on, we have, we're in the process of approves approving new rules and regulations that give the animal control officers. A clear and consistent process and procedure so that they can actually have some teeth in following up resolving complaints with with the animals that are out of control. And uh, appreciate the the clarity that's involved. We get stuck with. Due process laws that the judges tell us we have to follow, and that's been a problem. You're not going to spend a whole lot of time if. The process isn't very clear because you want, you want the courts to take action, and they won't if you haven't followed due process. So we're getting all that solved and should be able to have much better response for animal control issues out in the county.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the resolution extending and authorizing the sheriff uh to sign the agreement with the Humane Society for Animal Shelter Services.
Okay. We motion to approve. Any other questions, comments on that?
I. It's rather a lax day in my mind, and I'm thinking. The police do a very good job with the canines. And now they're going to have a lot more opportunity to, you know, that dog you adopt from the Humane Society, it may be well-trained.
Yeah. I. The only thing I will say, this was, this was kind of thrown at us as a surprise that that. They were, Humane Society was no longer going to do the control part, and so our sheriff and all the entities, you know, uh, the. Police departments around the the county were kind of putting in a time crunch to put that together. And actually, if you look around. At the cities and what our county has done, I would just extend a note of compliments. I think they did really well with uh. What they were thrown under and had to come up with, so.
You're here.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion to approve. I'm seeing no. No comments. We'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Motion carries. Are you taking on eighteen, the the fees too?
I am.
Okay.
So, yeah, as you guys remember, last week, we discussed the changes in uh County Code six twelve and six thirteen related to animal control and the. Dangerous animal codes. Uh, this is just a resolution to adopt the uh fees related to those changes. Uh, and you should have those. Should have those presented to you.
Yeah, I I pulled them up and I I have them here and uh. Just so I I clear, I I, we went through the changes in the code and how you identified a a dangerous dog. We were sitting, going to set up this panel that would do that. So these fees. Uh, like this first one, dangerous, potentially dangerous dog, potentially dangerous dog, dangerous dog, two hundred and fifty a year. That comes in after this. Panel, the the, here's all the information and makes a determination that yes, this is a a dangerous dog, and you got to abide by these things with it. That's when that this kicks in.
Correct.
It's not, once the, it's not based on breeds or things like that.
Correct. Once the review board uh. Determines the outcome, and if they determine that the dog is dangerous or potentially dangerous, then that's when these fees would kick in.
Okay.
Uh, as part of their stipulations.
A nice thing about this, this is not a check-the-box thing. Like you said, it's not a breed-check-the-box kind of thing, and it really does require the human. Human touch to assess the situation. Uh, by the way, uh, I don't think you introduced yourself to the public when you came on.
Uh, Jordan Spencer with the sheriff's office. Thank you.
Okay. Everybody?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the resolution adopting the fees related to chapter six dot twelve of the Calis County Code Animal Control.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the fees. Questions, comments? Seeing no hands, okay. Call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nineteen, Health and Human Services. There she is.
Good morning. Gina James, Health and Human Services. The item we have on the agenda today is a grant agreement with Lower Columbia School Gardens. This was a result of some conversation we've had over the last few months with our Board of Health. Our our Board of Health ended up recommending to move forward um with entering into a a grant agreement in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This agreement goes. From January of two thousand twenty-five through December of two thousand twenty-five, so a one-year agreement. Um, and it's to support uh and maintain the twenty school gardens that Lower Columbia School Gardens currently has to help support their. The maintenance and programming that they offer. Um, it's within all of the middle school and elementary schools within the Longview Kelso area.
So so this is a program from the state that focuses on nutritional education, nutritional health, and working with the school kids. To, you know, learn about proper nutrition and how you can grow the food yourself and.
I'm not sure if it's a program with the state, but Lower Columbia School Gardens has been doing some of that programming, working with families and kids to help engage in those activities.
This for me is a very complex issue because it attacks the heart and the brain. And I've received some communication from from outside, and it's been no, yes. The yes vote says it's a good program, and I've. This meeting and at previous meetings, I've said absolutely, it's a great program. So then the question isn't, is it a good program? It is, how do we maintain the program? How do we see that a good thing isn't? Destroyed over time. And the only way you can do something like that is to have a proper line of succession. You have to know who the champion is today that keeps it at a good program and who the champion will be tomorrow. And that's a very difficult. Task. I uh. I think the volunteerism is beautiful. There are plenty of examples. You look at youth soccer and baseball and all that kind of stuff, and. The parents put an inordinate amount of effort in there because they identify that it's a useful thing and they like it. If we started to make those be paid positions, it would change the profile completely. And unfortunately, and I'll probably sound a little bit arrogant here. I have a good view of. The long game, and it's a little bit, I feel a little bit like Cassandra saying, don't bring that Trojan horse in inside the gates. And that's kind of what I see here. Uh. It's not a function of the dollars. I'm probably just as cheap as as one of the earlier speakers. But it's not an issue with the dollars because I did volunteer and in keeping with what a feeling the chairman has expressed that. Uh, we don't want to really pay for salaries. We really don't mind looking at the infrastructure. And um. Infrastructure for the for the gardens could easily be uh. Kits, plans, material to build greenhouses, uh, all kinds of interesting things for the kids to learn, not only just where food comes from, but. There are greenhouses that pump CO2 in them. Wonder why that is? Isn't CO2 supposed to be a poison? And it goes on and on. And then. This plant in this right next door to the other plant isn't doing a good job of surviving. The other one is thriving. How does that happen? There are lots of. Things kids can really learn and investigate about the real world, and I was very much in. Favor of buying whatever it is they need for expansion into that arena, but it. I was told that that there is no interest in that. There's only interest in paying the staff. So uh. I really am not sure what the right thing is to do in the short run and uh. Anyhow, I'll leave it at that at the moment. Let somebody else speak.
So one of the uh. One of the interesting aspects to this is that this comes to us as a recommendation from our health board. Which has uh an equal number of citizen members as they have elected board members. It's the first specific request from that organization, and we've had the discussions with them as members of that board. And and talked about that challenge about, do we pay for staff? Do we, or or do we confine ourselves to the bricks and mortar aspect of 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 the project? Twenty separate sites does pose a a management challenge, and you know. The reality is people are very generous in this community. For things, or and it's, we 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 don't necessarily always contribute money to pay for the staffing that it takes to maintain the program. So. I'm I, I definitely understand your concerns on that, and uh. But I also want to honor the judgment of our our citizen-led uh Board of Health and uh. This, the other thing that occurs to me is we've spent the much of the last four years in meetings railing against the state. Health system because of all the mandates that they come up with and try to come up with, and this one is not a mandate. This is something that we've. And and the the local organizations still have control over, and I think that's a good thing. If it ever turns into a state-down mandated type service, that changes, that changes it. This is a one-year program. We can, the new board can assess at the end of a year, is it achieving the goals? There's going to be regular reports coming in on on what's being done. And uh, you know, I I'd like to go ahead and take advantage of the opportunity right now and and uh help that that program. Get to the next level of of permanence.
Just a couple of comments. The the request of the Board of Health was one based on believing it's a good program and trying to figure out. How to do the program or how to help the program. There wasn't specifically detailed discussion about how to do that. In fact, we asked H H S and uh. Ian to collaborate and figure out what kind of a program thing they would like. So the Board of Health approval is not necessarily an endorsement nor a rejection of the proposal. The other thing is there are twenty installations or so, I assume that's true, and what happens there, there's a seed there of what I call a danger. We. And I could talk about this at length and give you some international stories also. Centralization isn't necessarily a good thing. Just because Columbia Garden or, you know, some high, some school is doing this doesn't mean that. The other schools should do the same thing or anything like that, but this is the seeds then. What's really important is just the management should be as local as possible. And the important fact is communication. So for example, Facility A might say. We will do a greenhouse. Why don't you do a chemical analysis lab speak as they speak to another uh. Another school garden pro- program. Those are independent entities. We, in fact, as a nation, we are. Fifty independent states, largely speaking, whose agreement with each other is embodied in the constitution. We don't need the federal government to tell. Washington State how to behave because Oregon State behaves this way. So I I think we want to be careful of these arguments. I um. Anyhow, enough said.
My thoughts on on this program, I I, you know, as Commissioner Mortensen has has stated, I've had people come to me and they're on both sides of the ledger. I what I, how I'll say that is, I I don't believe I've had anybody approach me that does not like the concept. That this is happening in the schools. I think it's a good thing for students and and um. As I've said before, Lord knows they could take away some of the nonsense they teach in schools and put it over to something like this, and they'd be much better off. So. I haven't really run into anybody that I think has issues with the concept of this. Uh, I have had people have issues that we're we're paying for for labor and stuff on this, and I have some of those same same issues because. Once you open that door, it's very hard to, very hard to close it. And so that creates a concern. Uh, I, what I will tell you, I will support this for for the year, but but uh. If I see it being abused, I'm not one of those people that has any. But, but if I see it being abused, I'm not one of those people that has any, any problem closing that door next year if, if it's, if it's starting to show, show abuse. I don't think it will. I think Ian's pretty good. I hundred percent agree with Commissioner Mortensen. And I hope Ian has somebody as strong and as enthusiastic and as principled as himself to follow this. Cause that's, that's what, that's what will guide this program. You know, our, it really depend, I've worked for some large corporations and stuff. And, and anytime you have a leadership change, you could feel it all the way, way down. It really matters how things, our founding fathers understood that in our government. They said, if we don't have a moral government, it'll, it'll destroy itself. And you're seeing some evidence of that, a lot of evidence of that. And, and this, in that principle, I've seen it in the companies I've worked for. I've seen it in committees. I've seen it in, in projects. So that, it's, it's absolutely true that the strength of the, who comes on behind that? You need to have a succession plan and you have to have somebody that's as strong as the initial driver to keep this, this going. So that's just some words of caution, but I will tell you, I will support this for this, this year.
Good morning. Nice to talk with you in last meeting here. Sad to see both of you guys go. Just a couple of thoughts about the school garden as a member of the Board of Health who voted for it. I struggled in voting for it and I don't mean that anything at all against Ian. I think Ian does an amazing job. Some things that came up in a couple of those meetings were that the kids right now are only getting out in the gardens. I think he said every five to six weeks. Is that accurate? Is that what you said? Okay, okay. So, so say it's every five weeks. That means with a 35 week, 36 week school year, that's about seven times during the year that each class is making it out. And he's bringing in, he said $600,000 already a year with about 300 to 500 volunteers. So I guess when I look at it, it feels like the program is spread really thinly right now. So my vote for it was in hopes that this would be a year of transition for them so that they could reevaluate and maybe hone in the program a little bit. For instance, maybe it's all focused at third graders. And so those third graders are out in the garden every couple of weeks instead of trying to get all of the kids out there. Maybe the younger kids come out for a visit to see what's going to come. The older kids, if there's someone who shows a real aptitude, could be a helper with it. But hone it in a little bit so that the kids that are involved in it are really getting a lot of time in there and taking things away from it. And then, and then, yeah, and it's just a little more focused. And then maybe in a year, you won't need the extra $150,000 above the 600. So I guess that was sort of my vision of voting yes for it. So if, if it were to go through, that would kind of be, I guess, my vision for what would happen. And then in a year, he wouldn't have to come back to us for, for more money. So, so those are just kind of my, my thoughts with it.
You remind me of one, one thing, which is I think we adults tend to underestimate the intelligence of our youngsters. They may be third graders, but they're learning machines. They are sponges, never shy away from presenting a concept that you know they don't grasp today. Tomorrow they will grasp it.
Well, and that's it. And if, if they were out there every couple of weeks and they could integrate some of the more science things that you've talked about, like this plant grows well here, but it doesn't grow here. Why is that? Or why, you know, the greenhouses that you were speaking of or anything. But if it could be really honed in on a smaller group so that Ian and his staff weren't quite so spread thinly trying to cover, you know, K through six, you know, that, or K through five, that's six years of school. Maybe there's two classes, that's 12 classes per school, 20 schools. That's 240 classes that they're having to get through the garden. If it could be aimed at just one year and they really are just integrated into it and it's really, they spend more time and more, more of these kind of things integrate into it. And then the kids who are older than that, if they show a real aptitude and real interest, if they could come be helpers with it and they could help teach the younger kids and things, I think. So in my, in my vision, if, if this were to go through, the commissioners, have this be sort of a year of reevaluation so that next year, they're not spread so thinly and they're not having to, you know, cover so many classes and so many gardens in so many places. So anyway.
Good morning. I'm Ian and I, and I'm an employee at the School Gardens. And we're really grateful for this opportunity. One, to ask for help. We need help doing what we're doing. And two, just to sort of share and hopefully like raise the level of understanding. And so I, I am just grateful for this platform to be able to sort of, you know, share. And we've, this is something that we've been through. You know, in our journey, there's, there's, we have the misconception that we're still working on that is, oh, I hear that the schools have gardens now. That's great that the schools are doing that. And we have to say, no, this, you know, the schools aren't actually paying for that. It's a community-led project. You know, so people are still understanding that we're not district employees. So, and I also just, I think I just heard about the $150,000 being in addition to the, the 600 that it takes to run it for a year. And I just wanted to, to make sure that we know that we're, we're not asking for, for X, for money above that budget. We're asking for help meeting that budget. And we have, you know, shaved and honed what we do. And so that's, that's the help that we're asking for. And it is a remarkable program. And we hear that, you know, from the people in this community, but we also hear it from around the, around the state and around the region. And that program that we've heard a lot of positive comments about has been built with a lot of volunteers and community involvement. It's also been built with staff. So we have had paid staff since 2010. And if we hadn't paid staff over the years and built a team, then we would not be talking about this today. A few of the schools would probably have gardens. But what we're trying to address, that's sort of unique. If you look around other communities, you won't see it at this level. The thing that we're trying to address is how do we, does every kid, no matter what neighborhood they're in, no matter if their school has a functioning PTO or not, no matter if the adults in their lives can pull it together or not, do they have these opportunities to plant a seed, taste real food, you know, cook, that sort of stuff? So that's, we have done a lot of research and a lot of conversations with people doing this work. We've learned a lot of stuff the hard way. And we've learned a lot. And so I appreciate the compliments to the program. And I also am asking for some level of trust that we, we real, we evaluate what we're doing all the time. But we know what we're doing. We're good at it. And we've tried a lot of different models and we do get a lot of advice. And we appreciate that. But generally we ask folks to sort of come along and really like walk with us for a while and, and actually see it in action and see, oh, here are the needs. And I, I just want to say that I know what a sales pitch is and I know what would be easy and feel good to, to fund. And that would be like a greenhouse or a new lab. And you could buy the thing and we would feel good about, now there's something more. And I just appreciate folks, I'm just asking folks to listen when we say, we know what we need to make this thing go and it's not a greenhouse and it's not a lab at this time. We just need to be able to, you know, manage these programs and coordinate all these volunteers. And we have, this community is incredibly supportive. And if we need stuff like that, it's easy to get. If we build a structure, Weather Guard Roofing, we'll put a new metal roof on it for free. No questions asked. They just say, what color? And so they put metal, beautiful lifetime metal roofs on all of our structures. Lexington Garden is out there kind of in a wetland area. And when we looked at that newest site, it was underwater. And we had to raise the level of the land. We had to bring in many dump trucks of soil. We had machines and operators. And that was all zero dollars from our budget. That kind of stuff we can come up with. We've had people donate trucks and trailers. And we have a, we, we could use some more objects, but without, without the people, those things don't really function. And I've seen, visiting other communities, I've seen a lot of dusty greenhouses that someone got a grant and built a greenhouse, but there's no people to do anything with it. And for some reason, the volunteers aren't showing up and it's just sitting there. And same with some gardens. So anyways, I don't want to take too much, oh, another, another one that we haven't really addressed is just the, the idea of leadership and succession and that sort of thing. So for one thing, we're, we're a nonprofit. So we have a, a board of directors and the board kind of guides, oversees the mission. And, you know, staff will change over, but the board, you know, is the constant there. And also I, I was the executive director. I am, we now have a shared leadership model. So we don't have a director. And I know that you don't see their faces as often or hear their voices talking in meetings like this, but we've got a really strong team of people who really know what they're doing and who are guiding the vision and making stuff happen every day. And so I, I feel like that's something that should be more in the front. So, and we are very aware of what happens when a project, you know, is started by a person. And then we call it the run over by a bus clause. When that person is run over by a bus, what happens to the program? And you have to have a plan in place, a realistic plan to go forward without that person. And so we're super aware of that and we're, we're on it. So. I'll just, I'll stop there and give somebody else a chance, but thank you for this.
Couple of comments have come in on our chat. A program of this size is not able to run without leadership. As a former parent and part of the group that initiated the school gardens program, we know that kids move to the, onto the next level and parents drop out. Parents can be helpful, but we cannot count on them for the leadership, especially for a program of this size. Another comment, my daughter brought home a bean plant when she was in the second grade from her school garden. We have been growing beans from that plant for the last three years. And she takes so much pride in her plant. And every time we have a meal that includes the beans, a very cool thing for her to say, this is because I grew the bean in second grade. Such a valuable program. So that's a couple of comments that came in over the web. Go ahead.
Thank you. Regarding the program, I think we, most all of us in the community realize the value of the community garden program and the things that they've done for our kids under private volunteer resources. Now we enter a new realm that is another learning experience. When you go for public funding, there is another level of scrutiny that comes in that we should expect. And so I'm just saying is that public funding says that we should expect a quarterly report to the health board as to what they're, how they're expending the money, what good it's doing as part of the respect and responsibility to the entire Cowlets County taxpayers as a, as an example and as a lesson. Thank you.
I agree. That's a good idea. Also, does the county assume any liability by providing the funds? Since this, it was stated they're not district employees, but they have kind of created this job for themselves as a nonprofit. So by giving money, does the county enter any liability?
No, we require that they have their own insurance and coverage as part of contracting with them so that it's, keeps county liability separate from their liability.
Yeah. If I could add, I, I, I don't think it's an issue, but let's not forget that we end up with a sewer system because somebody defaulted. And people out there look at the county as deep pockets and we will get hit no matter what. But, but we can't use that as an excuse to stay home.
My name is Pat Reistroffer. I'm an educator, excuse me, I was an educator in the Kelso School District for 40 years. When I retired 14 years ago, I became involved with Lower Columbia School Gardens as a volunteer. Since then, I have put in hundreds of hours volunteering at different school gardens and various Lower Columbia School Garden events. I have served on the Lower Columbia School Garden Board for 12 years and I'm finishing my second year as president of the board. During my work as a volunteer in the gardens, I've had numerous interactions with students at various levels. And I've also seen the impact the gardens have on the lives of our students. I had the pleasure of volunteering with teachers at Barnes School. A fifth grade teacher generated pea seeds in her classroom and then brought her class out to the garden, planting the seedlings. Her class came out once or twice a week to measure their plants, plot their growth on a graph. And then the students compared their graphs and made predictions based on what they noticed. A fourth grade teacher, whose class was going to be tested on descriptive writing by a state test, brought his class out to the garden, had each student choose a plant and write about it in detail. He said it was some of the best writing his students had ever done. A first grade class had been reading about spiders and different kinds of webs that they make. The class came out to the garden and found real examples of several of the webs. One little girl told me that she was afraid of spiders and she didn't want to see any. But after the class time in the garden, that little girl came up to me and said, I didn't know spiders were so interesting. A special needs class came out to the garden. One boy was screaming and flailing his arms, but as he entered the garden, his arms went down to his sides and the screaming stopped and his eyes were open with excitement. One day at Huntington Middle School Garden Club, a girl who had a hard time fitting in with her peers was peeling bark off some branches that had been pruned from trees. Some other students asked her why she was doing that. She proceeded to tell them that she was going to make baskets with the bark. Being curious, the other students watched and they eventually joined her making the baskets. It was a joy to see this girl and share her knowledge and be accepted by other students. On another day, one girl shared that she loved coming to garden club. She said, I'm not involved in any sports, but at garden club, I feel accepted for who I am. And when I come to garden club, there's no competition here. There was a boy who came back to school after riding the bus home. I asked him why he came back and he said, because at home, all there is to do is play video games. And when I come to the garden, I can plant stuff, learn to cook, and I feel safe. Then there was the young lady who approached the garden booth during an earth day event. And she said, I want you all to know that I'm majoring in environmental science. And I was inspired by my involvement in school gardens. It's interesting to hear parents say, my child doesn't eat vegetables as their child is picking a sprig of broccoli off a plant that they planted and pops it into their mouth. And other parents came to our free produce stand during the summer. And one parent said, I'm so thankful to have access to free, fresh fruits and vegetables because I can't afford them at the grocery store. In our school gardens, students make great friends. They're architects. They learn to cook. They take risks. They become explorers and nature detectives. I'd also like to address the issue of paying salaries. And if you think about it, volunteers are not paid, but they're also not real dependable because sometimes they get sick or myself, I'm retired, I like to travel. And so if I'm not there, then that doesn't happen unless we have paid staff. And I can say, I'm going on a trip. I'm going to be gone for three weeks. Can you water? Can you water the plants and cover the classes? That doesn't happen if, if a group is only volunteers. The children's museum is a good example. They can just shut down because they don't have enough volunteers. A garden is a living, breathing entity and it needs care all the time. Plants have to be watered, food has to be harvested. So it can't just depend on volunteers. School gardens support academic achievement. They encourage students to develop healthy lifestyles and it helps students develop a sense of community. I strongly urge you to financially support this amazing organization. Thank you.
Good morning. I have no experience or no knowledge about this particular program, but I can tell you after extensive knowledge and experience with various people coming to my tree farm, people coming from cities that have no clue what the natural world is all about. In fact, I even had one woman come out to our youth, Yucca Christmas Tree Farm in high heels to get a Christmas tree. And no Dennis, I wasn't your wife.
I was.
Yeah. I've had a lot of, a lot of school, a school excursions out to our tree farm. Kids coming again from the cities, they had no idea what the natural world was all about. So I see this particular program as, as something that would be a good opportunity to introduce an awful lot of kids to being able to become self-sufficient, to understand the natural world. And yes, it's all about seed planting. That seed may not be the bean that we're talking about. It may be a future in their life about things that they may want to do. So regardless of, it sounds to me like this fellow again has got his act together. I know something about trying to develop a succession plan. And I will tell you that growing lettuce is a lot more, a lot more interesting than politics as far as finding successors. So I would encourage you to support this program. Yes, take a look at it after the first year, but I, I think that this would be a good investment in, in our future here in Collins County.
Morning. My name is Jacob Greenslade and I'm here today to provide my testimony in support of the Lower Columbia School Gardens. I speak not just today to the commission, but everyone behind me, everyone who's listening, everyone who's watching. We talk a lot about volunteers and the need for that support. So I think this message goes out to everyone. My thumb isn't terribly green, but I never outgrew the joy of playing in the dirt and creating something amazing. It's exactly the stage of life my two boys are in right now. One's with you, with me today. Despite my persistent scolding, they insist that dirt has a home on the food pyramid. I began volunteering with the Lower Columbia School Gardens with my kids late in the summer of 2023 after moving here. My area code doesn't begin with 360 and I was eager to find a community. I was also eager to provide my, eager to provide my boys with the type of enjoyment and fulfillment only found in a garden. As also a council school district substitute, I also volunteered throughout the school year. The work mostly involved guiding elementary school students through different activities and more or less helping them engage with the natural world. What I saw was incredible. Seven, eight, nine year olds routinely ask where kale leaves a snack on. Friends flock to pull and eat carrots during recess and others just want to stay a while longer to enjoy the peace. Stereotypes and social barriers are broken in the trellis walls of Lower Columbia School Gardens. Support for the program will be immeasurably beneficial, not just for the children and the communities they live in, but the communities those children will be forging as adults. I know this is a Department of Health subject. I'm honestly still not getting all the way right in on it. But when we talk about health, I want us to not want to consider the nutritional value of the gardens, but also the mental health value, something that we need to see much more of today and be building into our dialogue. That's all I have for you gentlemen today.
All right. So we've been around this discussion a little bit. I think you guys all know how I feel about it. But I was reading through that very singular page of presentation and there was a, an amount of area, right? And it's like some comparison to acreage. Now I don't remember the number. It was something like point zero, 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 three or something of an acre. I think Gina's looking that up for me right now. At any rate, it's $150,000 to maintain less than half an acre. Would the bank give them money like that with that presentation? That's all I got to say about that.
Good morning. I'd just like to say as a person who supports the garden program, that it does seem to be, it's a great program. I don't think anybody has said anything about that. When I first initially started thinking about supporting a program like that, the number was $50,000. That was the number that was on the, on the budget. I know it was just a plugged in number, but the, the ask came back as 150. And I thought, nobody said anything about that. It does seem quite a bit. And I'd also just thinking of numbers, if the, if the overall budget was 600,000, they're getting 150,000, that's a 25% raise. I don't know of anybody getting 25% raises. So I'm not against the program at all, but it might be something that the commissioners could consider. If there's a possibility, as Commissioner Martin says, when the government gets involved, it can fail. Well, maybe by starting with a lower amount, it would be a less of a failure. Other than the money, I do support the program. But I wanted to raise that, that it jumped up quite a bit from what I was originally thinking of.
So I'd like to say, say a couple more things. This is, if the program is so good, it should be funding itself with all the voluntary contributions. This is classic entry into, this is a good thing, so I want you and you and you to pay for it. The testimonials are something that I wish people would just understand. We, I've stipulated, everybody I've heard have stipulated that this is a good program today. The only thing on the table is how do we maintain a good program? We're bypassing all kinds of other detailed issues like, why isn't that part of the curriculum in the first place? And, and many such issues. And in, and the, there was a statement, volunteers are not dependable. Well, that is your key word for it's not worthwhile program or this is just the beginning of the request for funding and it will continue so. I will, I abstained last time. I will vote against it this time because I don't think people are properly understanding the arguments. And the reason I vote, I will vote against it is not because I'm against the program. In fact, it is because I'm for the program that I do vote against it. I too, Commissioner Mortensen, were for this program, but I don't believe it belongs where it is here. This is a program that belongs to the school district, not the county. And you three are elected officials and you two over here are about to become elected officials when January 1st, at 1:00, 00, 01:02 becomes time of now.
I can't wait.
But, but government, you know, what is government here for? Government is in the business of providing a service. I'm an elected official also. We provide a service in the entity I'm on a board of. But we provide fire and ambulance service. We don't provide garden service. And I can tell how this vote's going to go by the discussion from you three commissioners. It's real easy. So it's been a big waste of time, other than everybody who gets to say what they think. And everybody in the back of the audience, because every person that said something here, I've gained a thinking and talking point of what they've said on both sides of the street. But one thing we've missed, the little girl that saved the bean took it home and saved the seeds. And the kids in the fifth grade that planted the peas and made, saved the seeds and took them out to the greenhouse. I would hope that whoever's in charge of that program would point out that those two activities are very illegal and they would cease and desist. And as a farmer, I'm saying that. I think it's disgusting you can't save your own seed and that's got nothing to do with you guys. That's gone way above through the Supreme Court of the United States. But these kids are being taught to save seed. You can't do that. That's against the law. So just a point to think about. But no, I, I'm really divided on this. I mean, and as those of you who don't know in the audience or on KLTV, I'm a farmer. And I think there's nothing better than this, but I think this is the wrong way to get from A to B to C. We're going down the wrong road and I'm really sorry about that.
Any other?
Do you want a snide remark?
This is your last public meeting. You make any remark you want.
Well, I was, I was musing. I mean, I, I really respect everybody that's trying to get this program going. And this is very classic where we really embrace the product, but we differ on how to carry it out. But if I didn't vote no for it, what would the daily news print?
That's true. But we've already had your retirement, so I can't take that quote in there. Yeah. Yeah. Your guys' pleasure.
Are we ready for a motion?
Sure. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we do approve the grant agreement 25-003 with the Lower Columbia School Gardens to support maintaining the 20 school gardens within Cowlets County in the amount of $150,000 through the end of 2025, funded by the Washington State Department of Health through their foundational public health services program.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. I'll give one last call for any comments.
I just simply wanted to point out that I do appreciate the testimony and the discussion on the different sides. I mean, this is, I would disagree vehemently with the previous speaker that this public discussion is not a waste of time. It's a valuable process that we need to go through where we have this clash of ideas and we try to develop the best possible result in the interest of, of the, the people. Again, it's a one-year program and the next commission is going to be evaluating it as they do all the different programs. So I have confidence in, in how the program will come, come about. And we're going to be flexible enough to anticipate changes as the program grows. So without any further ado, I urge your support.
One other comment came in on the webinar chat and I don't want to get into a big discussion on this because it's kind of outside of what we're looking at. Open poll, pollinated, non-patented seeds are used by the organization is not illegal. I have no idea, but, but that was a comment. Okay. See nobody else approach? We'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you, Gina. We've moved item number five from a consent agenda over to a motion item. So we'll bring that up right now.
Wait, on that last vote, isn't there an age adjustment?
There's a.
Okay, never mind.
This is.
It's a discount.
It's a discount. That's probably more accurate.
That reminds me, I should bring it up one more time. I am, at this point in time, the youngest commissioner. That's about to change. Okay, item number five that was originally on consent agenda was, we had some work done on the annex building. And if anybody doesn't know the annex building, if you walk out, the annex building is staring at you right over here. We're, we're, we are doing some roof work, replacing the roof. We had done some air conditioning units and whatnot. And we experienced some leakage, some damage. And we ask, risk, we ask our departments to not wait for the insurance. Let's fix this thing because we have some plans for it and then we'll do battle with the insurance. So that's what this, this motion is about. And I think we moved it because originally we, we were estimating about 105 and now we're about 140.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Shelley Pierce, Risk and Safety Manager. In accordance with the recommendation of our risk pool, a site inspection was conducted by the assigned adjuster. Following the inspection, a joint meeting was convened with the adjuster and the contractor during which modifications to the scope of work were reviewed and mutually agreed upon. As a result, a revised proposal for mitigation and restoration was developed, incorporating the professional recommendations provided. The updated proposal reflects an increased cost estimated of 140,000 with an updated anticipated completion timeline of 12 to 16 weeks. All funding will be recovery from insurance claim already filed.
Why, why it was important for the commissioners, I'm speaking for them. They obviously could speak for themselves, but is we're moving the office of public defense into this building. We're paying a lease, a month-to-month lease right now and it will be quite a cost savings to have them into this building instead of the separate lease we're paying. So we felt, and you guys can correct me if I'm saying this wrong, we felt as a commission that let's get this building, let's get it fixed and let's get that, that going and then we'll deal with insurance as, as we come along. Okay.
So Shelley, I understand you feel pretty comfortable that it's going to be covered by insurance. So the money that we authorized today will be made up, not out of tax revenues, but from insurance proceeds.
Correct. And our adjuster is confident in that as well from the risk pool.
But the timeline is 12 to 16 months.
16 weeks.
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 Okay.
Yeah. I don't even, I don't like that either. I'm thinking 12 to 16 hours.
And, and, and the reason, the reason the deadline is important is that the leased space that the public defenders are renting right now is post-lease, which means they've, they're, we're also paying a premium on that lease amount. We're trying to get out as soon as we can.
Correct.
Into a building that we own, so.
Correct.
Your pleasure on this.
I move that we approve the request for emergency contractor purchase.
Any questions, comments on that? Okay, seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Thank you.
Happy retirement, both of you.
Upcoming events, one, I think, one that I'm looking forward to, and we've had them in before, but it's always been, the last time it was a good discussion. I think it'll be a good discussion again is January 29th, Wednesday, January 29th at 2:30. We have the Department of Ecology in. Last time I chatted with them, they were going to try and bring Army Corps with them. I don't know if that'll happen, but I think that'll, that'll be, that would be an interesting meeting and, and worthy of attendance and discussion. With that, I'll open up public comment. Anything you, anything you want to talk about?
I'd like to support what you just said. Department of Ecology, I think we mostly recognize as an obstacle. It really pays to have this room full when they show up.
And if you listen to. And if you've listened to us enough, you know I'm not a fan of Department of Ecology, but when I, when I, I talk about Department of Ecology, I'm thinking of the the top tier that kind of presses down on what they want to do. What we're having here is the people that are local, and I've met with them enough that I think if they had the authority, they'd do anything they could to try and help us. They just are kind of, in my impression, you're kind of pressed down on from above.
But I think with your presence, you can inspire them. I'll go back a little anecdote. The Wira 2526 went through an issue where I finally got on the board as a citizen, and they had at that time the contracts signed or a resolution, whatever it was, a MOU signed by the commissioners in the districts, and that would have allowed only about 25 exempt, private exempt wells to be drilled in Calhoun County in that watershed over the next 20 years. Well, finally, as citizens said, wait, wait, wait. And then and then I I got on and, make a long story short, that is pertaining to this, we had Department of Ecology in the meetings, and in pretty short order, the Department of Ecology representative was a decent individual and began to think, yeah, you know, they got a point. Well, guess what? He got replaced, and that happened twice again until finally DOE just gave up.
Yeah. Your your presence does make make a difference. Okay, we're open. Any public comment? Anything, yeah, anything, it's open. Yeah.
I would like to take the opportunity to thank Arn and Dennis for many, many years of service. If you're not involved in this process, you don't understand what difficult jobs these guys have got and all the time and the effort they had to put into it. And just just this simple discussion on what to do with a garden. You can see the depth of thinking and how many different angles there are to something like that. So these jobs are not easy, and thank you very much to both of you guys. My sympathy to Rick because you have to continue, but we're looking forward to Steve and Steve so they can take up the burden. So again, thank you very much and Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Yeah, I learned from Representative Walsh on Thursday that these guys get congratulations. These guys get condolences. Come on up, yeah.
Morning. My name is Steve Rabbin. I was in here last week and just asked some general questions about on how to maybe do a proposal or something. So I went home and worked my tail off and got some information together for you. And I just wanted to bring it in and give it to you or present it to you or or so you can look at it or whatever. It it's something that's, I think, is really important, and it it the the proposal and the the language that I put in there, I think, is something that's very it it puts more meat on the bone. So if a person does have a problem, law enforcement or whoever can help you. And it, I really appreciate it, the opportunity to be able to do that. I'll turn these over to the young lady there. But if it, if there's any questions or anything that, anything else I can do to help it or anything, I have my contact information on there, and I'd be more than more than happy and more than willing to to work with you all.
Okay.
With it.
You you want to share just a real brief synopsis of of the issue that?
What it is, is it's a, the, I'm wanting to change the language, well, add to the language in the Calhoun County Code in regards to target shooting and trap shooting within, building a buffer zone on the on the Calhoun River for several different reasons, protection of livestock, protection of the bald eagles and golden eagles and all that, also for safety of people on the river. There's been, they, every year, they do the annual float from Castle Rock to Gearheart Gardens. I think it was the second week of July or somewhere right in there. There was probably 400 people down there, and a person down on the corner, down on Sandy Bend, was out there trap shooting, and people in their kayaks were getting pupiled with shot and meetings. It's uncalled for. And there's there's other instances of people that target shoot, they target shoot towards the river. Accidents happen when you're shooting at that river. I mean, I was, I was side drifting, coming down from a camelot, coming down through there. There's some people in one of their little fishing shacks there. I drifted on by them, and then probably me and Larry got by him, probably 60 feet. And then all of a sudden, now they're sitting here shooting into the water behind us. I think it was they're trying to scare fish away from our our bait or whatever. I don't know. They're worried we're going to catch all their fish or something. I I have no clue, but I mean, it's just absurd. And so this, what I've proposed is just building that buffer zone. What I put on there was a 700-foot buffer zone that you can't target, you can't shoot. I used, I took language from DNR that you can't shoot over, across, up, down, or anything within of the river in that 700 foot. It's not, it's not trying to take away anybody's rights to 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 protect their property or their pets or their family or their home or anything like that. You can hunt on your property, providing you're doing it in accordance with the Fish and Wildlife Rules and Rigs. It's just a buffer to try to, if somebody is target shooting or 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 something, that you're far enough away that it's not going to impact somebody that might be drifting down the river fishing, might be drifting down the river just for a Sunday stroll or sitting on a on a beach having a picnic. And it, the the river is very popular, and it's, and you all know that. I mean, it's it's used by thousands and thousands a year. And it, I think it's something that is lacking from, that type of language is lacking in in the code. There's just really not much in there. And so I just got really motivated about that part of it, and 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 I would really, really appreciate y'all's support of it. I think it would, I think it would benefit a lot of people, and and it would, the biggest thing is keeping keeping wildlife and keeping people safe. Accidents happen, and we don't want to see an accident happen. I mean, it was, I couldn't believe some of it. It it just, I mean, the people just get, you know, knocked out. They just do. So anyhow, I thank you very much for that. I'll pass these over here.
Clerk will get it, and she'll make sure the new commission gets copies of it.
Yeah, I made, I made copies of it.
Well, she'll make sure it gets out, and and then typically we'll end up with a workshop, and we'll probably have you back.
Okay.
Okay.
Y'all have a good holiday.
Thank you.
Anything else from the public? Okay, before we get out of here, one last time, I'll thank these gentlemen for two years of, it's been a pleasure working with them. I've appreciated everything they they've done over the years. This is, as you you sit here, it's it it's it's frustrating at times, it's not easy at times. It it, you're you're trying to weigh a lot of things, and so I've I've appreciated the way they handled them themselves. And I'm sure the new commission will do fine also. But I I will, probably the only time I'll publicly admit this, I will miss these guys. And and
That's why, that's why the shooting ordinance is, we want you to miss us.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that gets on print, so.
Well, Rick, I I do want to thank you. I definitely have appreciated your your role, and I've learned a new use for the word netwit.
I got him to say it. I've been working on that forever. I called Department of Ecology, and I'm talking about the big one, netwit, one night. And I've been trying to get him to to come up with it. So we finally got there. Anyway, we appreciate your attendance. God bless, have a great holiday season, and I think the next public meeting you'll see you'll be a couple new faces. So we will adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.